Okay, I'd like to call to order the CVU Board of School Directors' regular meeting, September 16th, and the time is 7:15. So we'll start with the adjustments to the agenda. I would like to go ahead and revise 7.1 to read approve 2014-2015 Board Work Plan and approval of CVU Board Goals. And then, I guess, I should explain that we will, when we get to 7. -- I learned this from Jean, so you can help me out, Jean. That was pretty tricky. In 7.2 and for 7.4, we will actually do a motion to approve and then have that seconded, and then we will discuss any items or issues around those two areas, except anything that needs to be talked about in executive session. And then we'll take a motion to postpone the vote until after executive session. Then when we get to executive session, we'll talk about anything else that needs to be talked about, and then we'll come out of executive session and vote. I think that's it.
Good. Do think it makes sense.
I think that's the plan. I was just gonna delay the whole thing till after.
You're adding 7.4, which is to ratify the negotiated agreement.
7.4 actually was added earlier today, and a new agenda was sent out. But if you didn't get it, yes, 7.4 has been added to ratify the 2014-2017 collective bargaining Does anybody have any other adjustments?
I just had one. I thought on our -- do we have no summer hires? Don't we usually have to?
We didn't have any summer hires, yeah. Okay, so, moving on, Audience and Communications.
We need our new members.
I was going to introduce Lucy during the committee reports, but I can introduce her now. So you all remember Lisa Schold from last year. She's now a senior, yay. And this is Lucy Pappas. Is that your last name?
Yes.
And she's our new junior rep. Welcome.
CVU. Sorry, Charlotte.
We trained for it.
No, I'm from Charlotte.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm excited. Thank you.
It's great. Great to have you. Okay, so with no audience members to speak, I guess I just want to take a minute. I think Elaine or Sandy sent an email today to remind everyone that the board minutes are taken in part from the RETN stream, so everyone should speak loudly. They've asked us to do that. And also, I wanted to give you, it's probably the thousandth reminder, to please try to attend the VSBA regional meeting on October 1st in Milton. As you know, Secretary Holcomb will be there to take questions, so I hope as many of us can attend as possible. If you haven't had a chance to read Governor Shumlin's letter on education, please do that, especially before that meeting. And also, I don't know if any of you have had a chance to look at the new VSBA slash VSA video that came out articulating, doing the situational analysis of the issues facing education in Vermont. It's really worth watching, so please take a look at that. Elaine sent that out earlier today. We, and just for a minute, we had maybe talked about doing some carpooling for the October 1st meeting. Is there interest in doing that?
Yes.
So maybe we could plan to meet at Lowe's at 4:15? Anybody that's interested?
Meet where?
Like Lowe's parking lot?
Where's that?
Yeah, where are some of the shops?
Which one?
The one in Off-Roe 7.
Lolo.
So I'll send out an email and let everybody know that that's what we're doing, in case anybody would like to carpool. Okay, so, moving on. We have no presentations tonight, so moving on to item 5, Reports to the Board. I guess we'll start with the principal's report. 5.1.
Thank you. So a couple of good things I'd like to point out. And the first is our stable of new teachers. We've got seven new teachers who we are quite excited about. I'm not gonna read through each one of them, but they are listed there, and they come to us with various amounts of experience. But, you know, we've been very pleased so far with their credentials and how well they've helped us get started this year. That's the first thing. The other thing I'd like to point out is the enrollment report. Our enrollment right now is $1,293, so that's up a little over 20 from last year, which is also good news.
And I checked it, it's within three of what we budgeted for.
Well, that's -- thank you, Jean. That makes me feel even better.
To know that.
That is very good, yes. Yep.
Yeah, there goes Bill Smith.
Yeah, who needs Bill anymore?
Oh, he's just numbers.
Yeah. And this year's senior class is quite large, as opposed to last year's, which was quite small. This year's is 348 seniors.
Why are there so many more boys than girls?
Yeah, I thought that was odd, too.
I know.
I mean, consistent among the --
I was surprised by that as well. And it's pretty consistent in each class, as you pointed out.
They still haven't let women go to school. Still an issue. We're still working on it.
Get rid of those private girl schools. And then finally, I just want to end with some sad news, but a chance to recognize two former CVU students who passed away recently. Dan Mendich worked here from the mid-'90s till about 2003, was 48 years old and died in a drowning accident in Hawaii a couple weeks ago, but was a phenomenal teacher here and has a lot of colleagues and friends here, has a brother who works at St. Mike's. And Tom Devine, who taught English here for 30 years, and Dan Mendich also taught English, taught here for 30 years, passed away this past weekend at the age of 81. And I just want to have, take this opportunity to recognize the lasting profound impact they had on the culture here at CVU and on so many of its students. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's me.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, 5.2, CSSU Debrief. Jean, do you want to do that again?
No. I guess from my perspective, the, we talked about several committees that the SU is interested in pursuing, and how we're gonna handle some additional issues, like, remember the technology report from last year? Elaine shared a process of, if you remember, the technology report actually recommended that we hire someone to be a technology coordinator. The SU board's really shying away from that, and so administrations put together some efforts to try some interim steps, you know, really focus on technology, give, improve teacher goals around technology, and a lot more conversation about technology and how technology is integrated in the curriculum. And then we're gonna, as a CSSU board, will sort of reassess at the end of the year and say, is this working, or are we really gonna have to bite the bullet and bring in a, someone to drive this effort? So, one thing out of the technology audit report was that there are some schools that do it very well, CVU being one of them, but, you know, if we could share knowledge as opposed to starting from scratch or something. And we talked about communications, which I think we're gonna get to a little bit, some issues around governance, some issues around leadership, very, very full plate, I'd say, for the SU board. And then most, many of you were there for the common topic on special education. As you remember, special education's moving to the SU this year, has moved to the SU this year, so some changes there. Anyone else who was there would like to chime in? It was all kind of a blur for me, all those motions to postpone.
Yeah. All those new committees to start.
All those new committees.
I have a question on the new committees that are being formed. You are just pulling those from the SU or the CSSU board, right?
They're SU committees, yeah.
Yes, okay.
No other questions? All right, thank you, Jean. Fourth Quarter Financial Management Report.
It's in your packet. I'm the author with the help of your finance committee, so if the finance committee would like to make any comments on what's in the report, that would be more than welcome. Or I can answer questions, whichever is your preference.
I had one question. This is just a small thing. So the food service, the $51,314?
Yes.
The deficit? I'm just wondering, is this a typo here, or is --
We wish.
No, 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 not that.
Oh, the $51,000 doesn't show up at the bottom. That's because you was a board --
Well, I see the $50,314 from, on the food service summary. Is that about the?
And your question is?
Is that the number that you're reporting here? Is it a typo, or?
No, because the numbers are different.
They're different numbers.
The 51 versus 50.
That's a typo.
Are they two different things?
No, that's a typo. It's a 314 is...
It's a thousand dollars.
So it's a little better. It's a thousand dollars better.
It's a lot of C, I'm just --
Okay.
Yeah, the actual number should read, the deficit for Leo's operation for the current year was $51,676. That's on your financial statement. That's the overage expenses over revenue in the current year. You had to draw down the general fund to cover that, and you were able to use the remaining $1,362 you had in fund balance from a prior year, so that's the reason for the slight difference in numbers. But in essence, Leo's operation ran a deficit of $50,000. We were predicting, or he was, that it would be closer to 25 when he talked with you in the third quarter, and as the year ended, he finished 25 worse than that at about $50,000.
So that's actually the force for the trees thing. That is the story this month, this year, with our financials, since it's the first time we've ever run a deficit, and it's $50,000. We've always had a surplus. In fact, we've always worked really hard to, Leo's had to work really hard to not make money, because we don't want to be taking money from our families', you know, food budgets, and just putting it in an account, so he's worked really hard to keep it lower. Two dynamics, one is, I guess we had a couple of FMLAs, which, you know, they can hurt your labor costs, and some of the ongoing federal regulations is changing Leo's budgets or offerings enough, you know, what he can actually serve. As he works through that, it's giving him some financials. So we've, the finance committee asked Bob to work with Jeff and Leo and come back with a plan to break even. I would just tell this board that frankly, if having a break even plan means less desirable food in the cafeteria, that's something we should think about, whether we need a break even plan or not. I mean, feeding kids is so important that, you know, we may choose, like, all the K8s that we need to put it in the budget for, to operate at a loss. Given this is the only year he's ever run a deficit, though, I have high hopes that he's gonna figure out, you know, how to do that and continue the, really, the outstanding menu he has in that cafeteria. That makes the kids want to eat here. Because remember, what's another thing, I'm sorry, John, another thing with the high school students is they do have options if, once we approve senior privileges, they can eat elsewhere.
Yeah, I was just surprised to see it with so much of income having been huge before, so I don't know if it's just those few things you mentioned that make that big of a difference, or, but Bob and the finance group have their eye on it, and I think that's, it's not like we're --
Yeah, Leo has been extended an invitation to grace the finance committee with his presence the next time they meet.
Yeah.
In part because of this. If Leo were here tonight, the things he would have you remember are, the landscape has changed dramatically in the last three years relative to the interventions on the part of the federal government. The federal government has done a lot to change what are the constituents of a reimbursable meal. All government intervention is well-intentioned. Some of it comes across in the wrong way, and cafeterias across the United States are feeling the pain of trying to make it still financially reasonable to comply with federal regulations. The federal government has also marched headstrong into à la carte, and their approach to school cafeterias, they believe pretty much anything sold à la carte off of the main meal is probably not good for kids, so they're making it more and more difficult for people like Leo to have an array of food available, particularly for students who eat more than, from 12:30 to 12:52 in the day. His students come in all through the day. So he's working at his best he can and stay compliant on the à la carte side, but that's saddled him with additional burdens. He's also had price, held prices the same this, for a lot of years. May not be able to continue doing that, and as Jean mentioned, he's had some employment costs this last year that weren't anticipated.
Okay, great, so, yep.
Just two other real quick things. One is that before the $50,000 loss, the operating budget was about $90,000 better than we had anticipated, so that, we were in a good shape. We've been in good shape. We've been ahead of where we needed to be at the end of the year, you know, all along, and we're gonna be $90,000 better. This 50 because we've, we have to take, we don't, we no longer carry a deficit in the food account, cafeteria account, you have to balance it against, so instead of being 90 better, we're 40 better, but we're still better. So even though this was not a good thing and needs to be corrected, we were fortunate that we were in a situation where we can handle it. The other thing is just that, this time of year, we always have to ask Bob and Mike, is there anything in the actual, actuals from the budget that we should be considering for the next budget cycle, which we're starting up? And Bob, my memory, as you said, there was nothing, since we start, since we zero-based special ed and we zero-based, you know, staffing, there was nothing else that was significant enough. But we do always look at the actual budget to make sure that we're going forward off of a sound base, not just budget to budget every year. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
A question for advertising.
I mean, it's lower than its, projection is lower than it's been in prior years, but I was just --
Typically, you advertise for employment opportunities.
Okay.
You advertise for bidding. You advertise, you're obligated by government to advertise for things like a yearly asbestos warning to all your parents, students, and employees. So there's a lot of times we reach out and touch newspapers and so forth and spend some of your money.
Are board meetings in that category for annual meeting and things? I don't, they have to be posted. I don't know if that's in that category.
I think the newspapers are gracious enough to list the meeting notices without you paying for that, but the rest of the stuff, you pay a little for.
No other questions? We'll move on to the Student Council Report.
Hi, once again, I'm Lisa. I'm the senior representative.
And I'm Lucy Pappas. I'm the junior representative.
So CVU is once again back in full swing. Students are falling back into their normal routine, and I think everything's going pretty well so far. As for athletics, we've had a lot of wins. Well, I just came back from a volleyball game, and we won. And football, won a game against Burlington last Friday, which was a big deal, but lost two times before that.
And then we have soccer, both, both girl and boys teams are winning, and as are field hockey teams. And we have, so that's in terms of the athletics. And then we have the club fair coming up, which is on Thursday, and that's where all the clubs at CVU can, they go during the lunch blocks, and they advertise for their clubs and just share what they're up to, and try to recruit members from all the different grades. So that's a great, like, advertising for the CVU club scene.
The Athletic Leadership Council, which is, you have a representative from almost every sports team, and the, I don't know if you saw posters walking in, but they're participating in the ALS walk, and so they're fundraising for that, which is coming up on the 21st.
We have Rally in the Valley on Fridays. That's like the pep rally that we do every year. And sports teams and clubs have the opportunity to put together a fun dance and present it for the rest of the school. And so it's just a really fun time, and everyone gets to, like, have fun and see what everyone else is up to. And after that, there's the Spirit Day Dance, and that's held by the freshman class this year.
And then on Saturday, after Rally in the Valley, is Spirit Day, where a lot of sports teams are playing that day. So like football, you have field hockey, soccer, so people can go and watch them.
And then -- And now, we also have the musical, so I'm part of that, and we're all in rehearsals right now. It's Once Upon a Mattress, and opens on the 24th of October, and that's very exciting. We have a lot of great energy and lots of excited kids, students, working for it, and it's just really fun.
Yeah. So some things that have been going on, we've, students are seeing more of standards-based grading showing up in classes, so I think that's a good adjustment for lots of people, and it's been a ni, it's an interesting change as both the teachers and the students kind of get used to it. So going off of what you just said, with the cafeteria deficit, that has been a big change for students, and you hear a lot of talk about that. Because of the new federal regulations, they're no longer allowed to sell a lot of things, so the first day of school, everybody's like, where's our trail mix? All the trail mix disappeared, you know, like protein bars, no more bacon on our, yeah, that's, people are, people want to make sure that say, bring back bacon. Yeah, so things like that. But there's also some really great additions. There's really, there's cool new smoothies for breakfast. What else?
Yep.
Yeah, so, and then also along with that, because of the federal regulations, we're no longer allowed to hold bake sales anymore, so clubs are kind of looking around for new ways to fundraise and make money. So that's CVU in a nutshell, so far.
Great.
That's great.
Can you have bake sales, like?
Yes. So I know, I think that's still considered on campus, but I know clubs are taking their bake sales elsewhere, so like the rest stops in Williston, and I think that's a, yeah, some clubs are doing that. Finding, interesting.
You can create them. Okay. Thank you, guys. Moving on then to our committee reports. I guess I'll start there with the Communications Committee. As you know, we coordinated a Friends of CVU article for August, and everyone should have gotten a copy of that. Alice Brown, who was a co-chair of Friends of CVU, wrote that for us, and I thought she just did a really great job with that. We were hoping to highlight the outcomes of our class of 2014 for our September article with data that the school receives in late August. The timing didn't work out for us, so we don't have a September article. And as for October, we're still thinking about what we want the October article to be about, and we'll probably wait until after the CSSU Communications Committee meets, which we'll talk about in just a few minutes. So that's it for communications. Were there any other committees that wanted to say anything? I think we're gonna hear from the athletic fields and facilities next month. Great, then. Moving on to Discussion Matters, 6.1, Communications Plan. So the idea for a CSSU Communications Plan came out of the board retreat that was held last June. As you recall, we had discussions about communications in our local meetings, and then in the afternoon, those discussions were carried on, and Jean decided at the CSSU level that it might be a good idea for a kind of CSSU Communications Board that consists of a member of each of the local boards, get together and just talk about what each of the local schools are doing around communications, and see if there are ways that we can make the process more efficient in terms of the requests that we're making to the CSSU and to our own school staffs around supporting our efforts in putting together communications. So, did I capture it?
Yeah, the only, the really important thing is that this isn't a CSSU Communications Committee. It's really just a collaboration among the local board communication committees to have a conversation. I don't think we're just not ready at the CSSU level to try to tackle communications.
Right. And this is intended to be like a one-time meeting where, you know, representatives from all the local boards can get together and just talk about this issue. We're not sure what will come out of it, but it's a starting point.
Right.
So, I don't even know, does it have a name, that committee?
No.
It's just --
It's just, we're just providing the space for you guys to get together and talk.
To get together. So, with that in mind, CVU, as you know, has had a Communications Committee, I guess just the last couple of years. So we're into, I think, our third year, preparing monthly articles that show up in all of our local papers. So we've met at the beginning of this year, as you know, and we kind of developed a plan for the entire year. So we have all of our topics identified. Some of them would require some assistance from CSSU, some of them would require assistance from Jeff. If you want, I can share that with you. We can talk about it as a group, or, my thought was that I would just appoint somebody to this meeting from our own Communications Committee, since they're the most familiar with the topic. But I didn't know if you wanted to have a larger conversation about what we're intending to do over the course of the year or not, so.
Susan, I think that idea is what I was thinking anyway. You've had the conversation, you've discussed, and so if one of you would be a CVU rep, I think we're ahead of some of the schools. I had said at the CSSU meeting, our different, local papers have different schedules, and that impacts that. But if there's more umbrella kind of topics and conversations, I think it's helpful and interesting, and can help weave together what a pre-K8 building and what CVU have in common, or where our differences are, so I'm in favor of one of you.
Okay. That's, anybody else?
I'd love to see the topics that you have come out with.
Sure. I should have printed them out for you. But I'll just let you know that the ones that we would need support from CSSU that we've identified for this year, the first one has to do with the negotiations process. So maybe update, this kind of take more shape as we get closer to the month of publication, but our idea was really to focus on some of the things that Cindy was talking about earlier in terms of how the teams really intentionally worked to create a process for allowing better communications during the negotiation process. We thought that was really, would be a great thing to emphasize that we're doing in the schools. A second one was data-driven educational decision-making. You've heard Elaine talk a lot about this. Again, a nice, really thoughtful approach to education that I'm not sure the community really knows about, so we were hoping to do an article around that. Special education changes, which we'll be talking about a lot this year, and then tech integration. So those were the ones that we knew we would need some support from CSSU to put together. Other topics that we were playing with for this year, for which we would need help from Jeff or CVU staff, include this, the first one that I mentioned, the outcomes of the CVU class of 2014. So we thought that would be of interest to the community to kind of know what happens to a class after they graduate. Where do they go? What do they do? Of course, that data doesn't become available till later in the summer, so we would be a year off, but we're thinking about going ahead with that idea, maybe around graduation time, so we kind of reflect back to what happened with the previous class. A second topic was the new CVU house system. We do an article about that. An article about either the athletic fields or the co-curricular program, depending on how things play out with those two issues. Another one on prevention, discipline, and student behavior, which is something that we're gonna hear more about later this year. And one about Sback and socioeconomic and gender gaps. PLPs was another topic. And then the last one was, or is, academic outcomes and indicators, maybe along with the new proficiency-based graduation requirements that need to be established by 2020, that came out as a result of the educational quality standards that were passed last year. So those are the topics we're playing with. Pretty heavy stuff. And so we won't, we wouldn't get to all of them, but, you know, we would, this was the list that we came up with that we were, and we had some others in there that we could do ourselves, but I don't have those. do ourselves, but I don't have those at my fingertips. So there were, there were a few that, for which we wouldn't need additional help. Sound good? Or thoughts about that?
Can you just reiterate who's on the committee?
Leah, I'm on the committee, and Kim.
No, I just, I don't know who's on the committee.
Well, when I'm gone, she can be the one that you, that you go to. Uh, any other questions or thoughts about this?
That sounds fabulous.
Okay. Sounds ambitious, doesn't it?
Sounds ambitious.
Yeah. We like to be ambitious, though. So, all right. Well, with that said, um, I've talked to Kim and Leah and Kim has graciously volunteered to serve on this committee, so I would like to appoint Kim to be our representative to the, the board or the committee that has no name.
I'll let Kim do this one, but I want the next assignment like that.
Okay, then. I guess, now that that's done, we can move on to co-curricular discussion, my favorite topic. So did everybody get the document I sent out last night? I'm sorry, I sent it so late, but, just happened that way. So the document I sent out was just intended, intended to try to frame this discussion in some way so that we can figure out what steps we want to take forward, if any. So as you may remember, last spring, we asked Jeff to, um, start pulling together, maybe, should I back up a second and just remind everybody that we've had a couple of committees already looking at the co-curricular program and it came out of a, um, an original goal of, um, trying to develop a guidance document for Jeff to use, uh, to assign budget cuts to the co-curricular program in times when they needed to be considered. Um, in the process of doing that, we recognized that we really didn't have a good understanding of how the co-curricular program was funded in its entirety, nor really how students accessed the program. So we did a little bit of work around that and out of that, we asked Jeff last spring to begin, um, compiling information that would give us more, um, a better understanding of how students access the, the co-curricular program. And what he's been able to pull together today is the table that's on the last page of this document, which gives that kind of information for, um, students participating in our VPA sports program. And, um, I hope you've had a chance to look at it. I thought that it was, I was surprised to learn that approximately 60% of our student body participates in one or more VPA sports. That was a surprise to me. So I think that's good for us to know. This, however, is in the complete picture of how students are accessing the co-curricular program. And I know from talking to Carol that it took quite a bit of time to, to pull out all of this data. We don't collect this in a way where it's easy to generate tables like this and it will be even more challenging to gather data about student participation in the non-VPA types of activities that the school offers. So I guess I just wanted to make sure that we're really intentional about what we're asking Jeff to do, that it will require some time on, on his part or the part of his staff. And we should really be sure that this is data that we want and, um, it may actually require us to develop new systems for tracking this on a regular basis. So that was kind of the first question I wanted to bring to, to you guys.
Can I ask one? What's a VPA sport versus a non-VPA sport?
Good question. So VPA stands for Vermont Principal Association Sports, so it is a program that's overseen or?
Yeah.
Sanctioned.
Sanctioned, yep.
So there are certain requirements that go along with, um, providing a VPA sport at your school, so certain requirements around coaching and equipment and referees and things like that. So there are costs automatically associated with offering a VPA program.
And the initial, this whole process was initiated because we were making some decisions, budgetary decisions about supporting various sports. So, do we have enough information now to make those decisions? Do we need more information to make those decisions? I think those are our two big questions. End.
And I think, and I think kind of what came out of that was really, well, we don't really know what students are doing, so how do we start to make decisions about recommending how to go about cutting programs when we don't have a, a basic understanding of who's doing what at the school? So that's where the, we kind of backed up and looked at that.
I, I had a question on the second page, the distribution model. I think it's just a matter of, if you, 75% of the school budget is distributed to VPA sports, or don't you mean that 75% of the?
I'm sorry. Of the, of the co-curricular budget.
Okay.
Yes.
Not the school budget.
Not, not the school.
Well, that's something. Okay, I just want to be clear about that.
This is why I really wanted this reviewed before I sent it out to you.
Now, I get it. Okay.
You know, what I'm doing is, I'm kind of, um, tackling the questions that I identified one at a time. So I was kind of starting with the participation because I see a connection between understanding that before we do a lot of work around guidance around the budget. So.
It would actually probably have to be finer even because it would really be the number of particip- if we're talking about numbers of participants who are touched by different sports and stuff, it would probably be how many individuals play a sport and how much is the cost of that sport, because ultimately that's the fine level at which we would need to do it. If we were discovering that we could not afford to support all the VPA, um, sports activities, the way we'd make a decision somehow is based on the number of students that might be involved, the costs, and I don't know what else. There might even be some other variables.
Leah, I think we have that data.
You mean, you mean understanding on a per activity or per sport basis, how many unique students are participating?
So these, this needs to be joined with.
We worked on that last year. Remember, we know how many students were participating in a sport and we knew exactly how much money was fundraised for that sport and we knew exactly how much money the school put.
That was that really detailed table that you got last, last.
We should be able to find that.
But what we didn't know in that were how many, how many were unique students participating in that.
That's right.
So if they were also playing another sport or involved in many other activities, that would be, maybe a factor in thinking about budget cuts.
Yeah, the example there would be you have kids who play, a lot of kids who play soccer and lacrosse, but you don't have a lot of kids who do, um, wrestling and anything else. I'm kind of making that up, I don't have the data, but that, that might come into play if you decided you had to cut a B team on lacrosse before you cut the only team on wrestling, you know, if, if, if that kind of thing was in your head. I don't know, I mean, I thought Leah was gonna be, well, we know how big a soccer team is, we don't actually need to know if it's 19 or 21, but maybe you do.
I don't know to that grain, but, but in general, I think we kind, we do sort of need to know how many people that touch.
But I guess it would be easier to go back if we're at that point of analyzing the impact of cutting one sport, look at those 20 kids and see what else they're doing, rather than having Jeff track every team, every participant. I'm just trying to figure out what we need to ask for, as far as more data goes.
Very short survey that we give to every student. The students know what they do and that could be given in advisory, you know, check off any, any activities. I mean, that, that probably is the most reliable source of information you're gonna get.
Do it in the statistics class as a homework assignment.
There you go. A grad challenge project. I love it.
I think it would be useful just to, to know what our students are doing in our program. I mean, I, I think that in and of itself, regardless of, you know, using it as a decision.
But perhaps, perhaps with Lorna's example, it could be a one-time thing. It's not really gonna change dramatically year to year, right? So maybe it's.
No, no, it'll give you a snapshot of where things are at now, which is at least a start.
It seems to me like it's a database issue and I, I don't know if we have a student database where we keep student records and whether there are fields within that database that we could use to include their participation in other activities that we're not tracking at this time.
My understanding is it is up, it is kept up for all the VPA sports.
Okay.
Um, it's much more difficult to do for a lot of the clubs. The club, there's so much fluidity with club membership that Amnesty, for instance, could have 15 people show up to one meeting and 75 to the next meeting. And does a person showing up once count as a member? And is that useful, uh, you know, is it misleading data for you if we ask kids, well, how many clubs are you in? And the kid who really went once writes down that they've participated.
I mean, you know, but at least you get some idea.
We can do it. I, I just have been hesitant about going there, knowing that I don't know how valid that information will be for you, depending on your, how you want to use it.
But I wonder if you do it in like February, so kids have kind of settled in to what they're doing.
Yep.
And would be less likely to report a FBLA meeting they went to in September.
Right. Yep.
There, there are faculty advisors to all of these groups. And my thought would be that they should be the ones who are recording participation, just like the coach would record who's on the soccer team.
But we have to recognize that many of them are not paid.
Understood. But we're talking about once a year documenting who participated in what way.
Yeah, and I, and, and I'm fine asking for that, just making sure that the caveat is that we don't know how accurate it'll necessarily be because, for instance, um, frisbee, ultimate frisbee.
Right, understood.
10 kids one day, 50 another.
Yeah. But in some ways, it's a, I, I would think we'd want to know, it's a reflection of student engagement in CBU.
Yep.
And, and if by having some data that shows how many students are participating in the various activities that are offered here and being able to see which students are not participating in any, uh, could be valuable to thinking about what we do next.
Right. Okay.
Lisa, well, you mentioned that the faculty advisors, I mean, they're not paid, but, um, we have all, um, representatives from each club come to like a big club meeting and so we could bring that up, like can you take attendance for the next couple of weeks or put the, um, the officers of these clubs in charge of that? Because I think that, like Lucy is the, of the president of FBLA and I'm on Environmental Action Club and I think that's definitely possible to bring up at the next club meeting.
The, the database issue is getting that data into the database, so someone has to enter.
Figure out how to get that into MMS.
Yeah, that's the challenge, I think.
We can, we can certainly look at. That part, I'll have to talk to the people who currently populate MMS.
I think you had actually said last time that you thought it might not be a bad idea to, remember on the, on the report card or transcript, it shows the sports, that VPA sports students participate in. Maybe it would be useful to include that information too.
We keep talking about sports, but there's lots of.
There are so many other activities. Right.
That students are participating in. Right.
Wouldn't we just want to know, yes, I'm on a VPA sport and yes, I'm in a club for one person? I don't have to join five clubs, I just have to be involved. Right?
I think that's an important thing to know. But again, if we want, if we think we might want to use this data to evaluate if we're in a situation where we need to make budget cuts, then I think we would need more information than that.
I also wondered, is 60% high?
Low? Average?
Is anybody else surprised at that?
I like, I like, I thought it was high.
I thought it was high.
I thought it was high, too.
And, and I think it's very positive.
Yeah. But I also didn't know how many dual sports, triple sports reflect in that number.
Well, that's what, so the 40, the last column says that 40% of our student body plays in only one, which means 20% plays in two or more. So I thought the 40% was high.
Most of the kids I know who do sports are doing.
More than one.
And these are just VPAs?
These are just the VPA.
Doesn't have anything to do with other clubs.
Right. Right.
And Jean, I think, I think that when you follow in the, uh, the non-VPA drama and all the clubs, I think you're looking more, I think another 15% probably. That'd be my guess, of people who are not in VPA sports.
And that would be a great thing to know, you know, when we're talking about budget and, you know, all those things too, to know that level of engagement is, it's a good piece of information to have.
It, it really does come back, it really does come back to what Jeff finds out about how much of an expense it is to gather and maintain that data.
Right. So I'm wondering if we want to kind of let you know, this is where we're headed, what we would like to have, but maybe check in with you in, I don't know, maybe even, would it be too late if we checked in in February when you do the prevention presentation? Maybe this kind of ties in engagement prevention?
Uh, well, I'd have to talk to the people who are in charge of the Prevention Committee, it's a new group, and see how well that dovetails.
Okay.
But certainly, we can start having the conversations about the data piece and the technology piece of populating MMS with this information. And then we can work with the clubs on how to gather that data.
Okay.
But Jonathan's right, we have to create a sustainable system.
Exactly.
Unless we decide we want a one-time system.
Unless we want a, that's a very good point. Yep.
And I think it gives us information, just as we've said, would we ever want to limit a student's academic enrollment? I mean, students graduate with many more credits on average than is required. If we're looking at budgets, I, I personally never want to limit, but, but where is our responsibility financially? And, and so to me, this fits in with that. We want to offer the most.
Give you the information to look at that.
Some people will participate always, some will never, and so where do we, what is our role in that? That, to me, is how I'm looking at this.
So again, you would need a really fine-grained analysis of what students are doing to start thinking about that as a, uh, as an approach to managing the budget.
I don't think it's a good way to manage the budget. But if we need that kind of information, um, I, I don't think we're there yet at all at our, in our district. I think we, our, our, you know, parents in our community want us to produce the most engaged, enriched individuals. So I, I'm, I'm torn with, if this says that, you know, eliminating a team is the best way financially, well, the one soul who really connects with that team or with that art or with that whatever, I, I know I'm making it a much bigger conversation, but I just lay that on the table because sometimes cost is not in just dollars and cents.
We've said this many times, the co-curricular budget is a very small percentage of the overall budget, which again is a reason to really think about what we're asking for with it. I do think, though, to Jonathan's point, that just knowing what our students are doing and how engaged they are is worth knowing. Um, and, and actually, you know, if our numbers are really good, which I think they probably are, it's good information to share with the community, too. I think it speaks really well to what we're doing.
I would just want to add, I get a little uncomfortable with using engaged as a phrase because many have internships or jobs and are not taking advantage of some of our opportunities because they are taking advantage of some very rich opportunities outside of the school. So it's just something to remember.
But it, but it would, it would be a platform for an advisor to have a conversation around making sure they're engaged somewhere else.
And I also think a lot of these things play into the PLP and as we start to form that more closely, we'll have, probably have a better tracking system with that because of it as well.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
So I, now that I think about it, and I've stumbled onto this, I do think that there will be a more sustainable system as we build the PLPs.
So, um, this whole idea of, now I can't use the word engagements.
We can. We just don't understand, we just don't understand there is engagement outside the classroom. We just don't understand, we just don't understand there is engagement outside the classroom walls, just like there's education outside the walls.
At least to the second idea, barriers to participation. So getting this kind of information that we've just talked about would help us have, I guess, as a first step, understand whether or not any barriers to participating in our co-curricular program exist. So kids who want to participate but for some reason cannot, maybe due to transportation issues or program costs, some of the programs, you know, do cost money or just the type of programming offered. We don't really know anything about that, so, you know, if we move down this path and gather some of this data, we'll start to get an idea of how many kids are not engaged. But like you say, maybe they're engaged in other things and they're actively choosing to do something else. But are we, are we interested in knowing whether or not this other population exists? And if so, do we want to try to identify why and whether we need to do anything about it? Am I clear about that?
You don't know who to ask.
We, we had talked about maybe doing a student survey last spring. I just, I'm concerned about putting too much on Jeff's plate with everything else that's going on at the school. So that's why I wanted to be very clear about what we're asking for and maybe develop a roadmap to where we're headed and start looking at these things in pieces. Do you guys have any thoughts about this?
Well, I've learned a lot just listening. I have really gone from, how much data do I need, which is something coming from me, to this whole concept of how engaged our student population is and how do we make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be engaged? To me, that's like completely different from where I was when I read it earlier, which I think is, really is very valuable board work and is worth, it's worth doing.
I think one of the last things that Susan and I, when we were working on this committee last spring, is equality. And we had a lot of conversations about, you know, who gets to participate and who can't and why. And, you know.
Couldn't answer that question given the data you had, right?
Yeah, we couldn't answer that question. We could speculate and we could, you know, there would be anecdotes, but.
So there's one thing that, that I think is kind of a big elephant in the room that we haven't, we don't really want to deal with, but we probably should, is this whole concept of fundraising. You know, we've had this, we've kicked this conversation around several times. What's our philosophy around fundraising? Can anybody go out to the community and fundraise? I mean, I know we have some fundraising policies, but, you know, we have a couple of sports that we require fundraising and, that doesn't really fit in the other engagement model that we were just talking about.
No, I mean, I, so the last three items all deal with funding of the program, including fundraising, because right now fundraising is a way that we fund our program. Number three speaks to the fact that we don't really have a model for assigning part of our general fund to co-curricular budget. Four speaks to the fact that we don't have a model for distributing co-curricular funding to individual programs. And five speaks to, back to our initial goal of how to prioritize program cuts when needed. And fundraising is kind of related to this whole, in my mind anyway, this whole issue of, you know, looking at how we're funding it now and how we might want to change it, where does fundraising have a role in it? You know, some communities have angel funds where they fundraise to help with equity issues. Some communities have whole school booster clubs where they fundraise. And we have a different model, we allow any activity or sport to do their own fundraising. And it's a significant amount. So I almost see that as a separate, actually doing another committee just focused on that. And I guess I just felt like some of these other pieces needed to be in place a little bit more before we can really come up with a model. I thought, I just, it seemed to me that the participation piece had to be better understood before we start looking at whether or not we want to make any changes to what we're doing. What do you think?
I think getting information about the extent of fundraising needs to be, we need to get a better grasp of that. I mean, it sounds pretty loosey-goosey, it sounds like it's happening, but does anybody keep track of it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's all, yeah.
Well, that wasn't all the data we gave you guys last, at the last committee. So we determined that of the total amount spent on the co-curricular program, roughly twenty percent of it comes from fundraising.
And Kevin is the one who manages all the little trustee accounts, which there are numerous.
For each, for each club and each sport.
You need a person just to manage those trustee accounts.
And the primary drivers of that are football and hockey because of the significant expenses involved in each sport.
Right.
There's equitable general fund.
There is.
Funding.
Right.
And then above and beyond is, has been the individual thing. That's very different from what Jean was talking about, past conversations of private fundraising and endowment, things like that. And that's, that's a really very different, bigger philosophical conversation.
What were you saying?
I was never a favorite of private fundraising. I don't think we should be going to.
No, no, but that, isn't that the conversation you're talking about? That you just mentioned fundraising.
Oh, well, I guess from the perspective of I'm conscious that we shouldn't have our kids going out begging from the community all the time when we already tax our community very heavily to provide services to the kids and so we, it should be controlled. And I know we do have fundraising policy in place and I'm sure it's managed, but, so to that, to that extent, yes, I'm afraid of is that we go too far in that direction. As long as there's equity among the sports from the general fund and the ones that are more expensive, you know, do have to fundraise, that's the expectation. And the other groups have to keep their fundraising within limits.
Right.
That's a kind of model, it kind of works for me. I just don't know if I have that, like, specified anywhere. Have we had that discussion as a board? Should we be doing, you know, I know you've said in the past that we shouldn't be fundraising at all, right? If it's part of our educational model.
I still am thinking that way, that if it's offered at the school, that it ought to be covered by the budget. And that teams and clubs and activities, no matter what type of team, club or activity it is, shouldn't have to go out and do fundraising. If we value that activity, we ought to show that in our budget. And if we don't value that activity, you know, I mean, that's what we do every year, all the time. Is allocate resources to our priorities. And, you know, some things are more expensive than other things. And so to say that the same dollar amount is equitable, I'm not sure. So it's a very, it's a very complex issue for a public high school to wrestle with. But I think it's important enough, and I'd be willing to spend time working on it. I just feel like it's, it's.
Do you think we're ready to start working on that now?
I am.
Do you think we need more student, understanding of the student?
Yeah, I think we still need some data, but either we can manage with what we can get or we can begin to say we need this, and so let's put a system in place as to how we're going to gather that and make it sustainable, to gather it regularly. And from there, you're going to shift and get into the more complex. And that's no small thing, the database first, but then you're going to get into the philosophical and the more complex issues.
So you're okay on putting that off for a while?
I said I was ready to.
He sounds ready to go. It's not a one-time meeting, two hours.
I think that we've danced or touched on these issues for a few years. And then they come up and then we're sort of at a loss and we don't quite know how to deal with them. And so this is an opportunity maybe to take that step back, figure out how we can get the data and the understanding that we need in order to address those issues. So I, I just feel like it's long-term project work, but we should begin if, if there's enough others that are interested and willing to work on it.
Then we should begin, you think there's enough here, we can begin now.
Yeah, I don't think any of the data we're going to check is going to change the basic philosophy of.
Yeah.
And I think last year's data, we see that baseline.
Right.
Yeah, we have a lot, we have a lot more data now than we had before, we really do.
As a group, acknowledge the limitations in the data that we're working with and put it out there and say, this is the best we got for now. We're working on getting better data going forward, but this is where we're at.
Okay, so how about if I invite you all to let me know if you're interested in being on this third co-curricular committee? And we, this is, will be the third one. Oh, is it the fourth?
It's a standing, you know.
Maybe it will become a standing, maybe that's what we should. But just let me know if you want to be on it and I'll come up with a proposed charge for the next meeting and we'll get going.
One thing I would see in the charges is just a statement of our philosophy around co-curriculars. I just, I say that every time, I just would, I know, I know what I would write, but I don't know if I would like to have a conversation about it. Why do we have co-curriculars? They're completely optional, right? We're spending public money for co-curriculars, why, right? So it would just be interesting to have a statement there.
Yeah, and what Jonathan said really made me think about the fact that if we think it's important to be offering it, then it shouldn't be dependent on fundraising because, because that means they can only offer it to such a degree if they get fundraising and otherwise, if they get the extra money, otherwise they can't necessarily carry out the activity in the way that we intend or expected them to be able to do. And that's not right, that it would be like this depending on fundraising. So I think this is a good discussion to have. Do you want the charge to be that limited, so we do this kind of in small steps? Or should it be? With, with a goal of really, you could send me some ideas, sure.
We could probably have a charge in next month anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah, you could.
People can send you some ideas and you can see what you could craft and edit it at the time.
There's some statements flying around CBU about co-curricular activities anyway, about student participation.
Sure.
Living up somewhere, so.
Yeah, there are.
Deep and base, good stuff.
Okay, great.
Good discussion, yeah.
I have blurred it out. I had this idea a couple of years ago and didn't go anywhere with it, which was, this is radical, that we add to each pupil ADM amount about four hundred dollars a year. And what that entitles you is one overseas trip. And that you continually do it and that all kids are offered the opportunity to go on one international trip in the four years. And it would be paid for because we're putting that money into an escrow account and it's an ongoing sort of thing. And that's when it was, you know, sixteen hundred dollars to go for a week or something, so it would have to go up. But the idea was rather, I didn't want to limit who gets to go on the international trips. And that, and I think they're incredibly valuable and I thought that every child should have that opportunity. And that we just put it into the budget for kids, for education, that's part of their education. We're going to, we're going to just build it right in. I didn't get anywhere with that idea.
This is one of the ideas that everybody totally agrees to until we get into budget sessions.
I don't know.
But it's the idea, you know, of that, if we really think this is important in a child's education, then we should fund it. And that we can make it so every, everyone can have an opportunity.
International trips, Polly, right, was one of those gray areas?
Yeah, they were.
We couldn't really assign to curricular or co-curricular. So maybe we can put it in Jonathan and Polly's lap in the committee.
Well, it's a bounty-based conversation.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's more than a philosophical education base.
I realize that, I realize that, and it'd be a radical shift, but on the other hand, I just think that we've had very good experience with them and the kids come back enriched in ways that we can't possibly replicate here. And because everybody could have that chance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I guess we will move on to action matters. So seven point one, could I have a motion to approve the 2014, 2015 board work plan and CBU board goals? Second. Do we have any discussion?
We're busy, a lot of goals.
Really, if I were to do this again, I would map it out to where we would see it on our work plan. But I've done that myself, so. I would sort of map out when we were going to look at these different areas and the, and the goals, when we were going to touch on them in our calendar.
Vivian hints, Susan, it's good to keep track during the year when you do touch on them, so at the next retreat you can say, we did this, yeah.
Thank you.
We used to spend hours going through the, did we talk about that when?
I mean, I don't think we, I don't think we had one last year. I don't remember. I kind of went through the files and looked at what had been done in previous years and pulled out the ones that I thought were relevant and the ones that were new, so that's where it came from.
Can you remind me when we, when the accreditation comes around again?
Twenty seventeen.
In the sixteen, the preliminary year or seventeen, the preliminary year?
Sixteen, I believe.
It's every ten years.
It's good to me.
Okay. All right then, all those in favor of approving the 2014, 2015 board work plan and CBU board goals, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. So seven point two, here we go. So I need a motion to approve the budget assumptions and budget calendar. Thank you, Kim. Thanks, Jean. So now we can discuss anything except for what we need to talk about in executive session. Any questions?
Just on the transportation item seven and C, the maintenance and repairs, Bob, the thirteen, fourteen actual plus ten percent? Why would we do that one at ten percent versus generally plugging five in?
In the not-too-distant past, you, we had a significant overrun in maintenance and repairs and hadn't adjusted it for years. And so this got added, and I think the ten percent has been there for a number of years to make sure we finally catch up. The, the point is valid, it can be any number from five to ten, it covers two years. I'll just remind you, it covers, you're taking last year's actual and moving it forward two years for maintenance costs in the facilities. The reason I offer you the latitude is we were in good shape this, this last year. So it looks like you've been effective in catching up.
Number nine, the student or the school choice?
Yes.
There's no cost associated or there is?
The school choice program in place for last year going forward is that kids enroll and no cost moves with those kids, okay?
Right.
Okay. You had an agreement with approximately five other high schools predating the law change that had base amount move in essence with the kids, staggered over two years to complicate things, but anyway, money moved. Superintendents met a number of times on the subject and agreed that for kids that were enrolled under the old school choice program through their, through their attendance at least next year, would, the payments would move with them. And they're going to continue to discuss each year whether they continue that for those kids who are still, if you will, grandfathered.
Yeah.
In four years, the program disappears and we've got just the current program with school choice. Have I done that?
Almost. We did agree that this next year will be the last year.
It will be the last.
And that was all of us sitting around the table.
And Jeff, how many students are in school choice here right now that came in this year?
Well, we get an allotment of 30, but that includes the ones who are already here on school choice and we had a waiting list, so we have our full allotment.
Okay. I had a little concern about the calendar. So we do maintenance in October, we do purchase services in November. Really, our first budget meeting outside of regular meetings, December 1st, where we see the preliminary decision packets and then we have a December 15th meeting and then we have the final one. It just kind of feels like we are missing a meeting in January where we come to blows. The mud, the mud, the mud rustling. I don't know, hopefully we wouldn't need it. Maybe the whole process will go really smooth and we'll be done with really, we're going to basically have two budget meetings is what I see, which feels like we should probably have something on the calendar in early January that we don't have to use if we get done.
Before the 12th?
Yeah, the 12th, the 12th, I think is when we have to do the.
That's the final.
Final, final, right?
Isn't that a little early?
Yeah, it is.
No. No, the fundamental change is, as I outlined at the CSSU board, is special ed moves to the SU, the whole conversation around special ed. And so instead of happening six times locally, it's happening once at the SU. In addition, we've pulled maintenance, capital, equipment, the facilities piece off of your budget agenda and moved that to October. And so we believed coming from those changes, we should add a meeting in at CSSU to discuss this new topic of special ed across the entire SU and take a meeting out from each of the locals since the work has shifted.
Which is why we don't have one in November and I'm good with that.
That's why we don't have the November, okay.
Right, but I also, when do we actually see the, when do you actually roll it up and see all the tax locations and all that? I mean, I think that's usually in January.
It used to be we waited until January when we had accurate information, but nowadays you each ask for something probably the first week in December. So it's based on whatever level of information Jeff and I have and we point out where we use an estimate and so forth.
Last year, that meeting was that mid-December one, the 14th or 15th was when we had that information. I remember it well.
So what do you think? Do you want to try to add one in just in case, that first week in January?
Maybe we can ask administration to go back and see if they could figure out how to put one in the first week of January. I'm okay voting with it the way it is. I mean, if we need the meeting, we'll have the meeting, right? If we don't have agreement on the board, it's just that I, my preference would be that I have it on my calendar so it doesn't turn out to be a day I can't make it or something, right? So, so what, I just.
Can Elaine and I quietly add it to the calendar?
Yeah.
As a provisional? And I say quietly, I just assume not have all seven boards add a meeting in.
But when they all watch the CDU meeting on TV, Bob, they're going to know.
They don't watch.
This is a test.
You don't have to worry about that.
But anyway, let's, let's cover that contingency for you, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so I guess I need a motion now to postpone the vote until after the executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Leah. Thanks, Polly. All those in favor of moving to postpone until after the executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to seven point three, could I have a motion to appoint a policy committee member? I guess, I guess, yeah, wait a second, let me rethink that. Could I have a nomination? Or should I, yeah.
Does Lorna?
Lorna? I nominate Lorna.
Okay, so could I have a motion to appoint Lorna to the policy committee?
I'll move.
Second.
We don't need to vote, you can just appoint her.
I can, well, I think, I think that Lorna wants to say something before I do the vote.
We were asked to commit to the dates way in advance and at this point I can make all those dates, but if, if I can work on my husband a little bit, we might, you know, be able to take a week off and go someplace. And so I don't know in advance. I mean, I can't, I can't 100% guarantee that I'm going to make every policy meeting.
The thing that came up, I'm not saying this so you have to do it. The thing that came up is that when folks couldn't be there, there was not a quorum and they couldn't meet. Now, we're meeting if Cindy's alone or if one or all, so.
Right, so that should be okay.
I appreciate how attentive you are and if you can't make one.
So I had also wondered about also having an alternate on the committee that.
I don't know.
Either go, come to the meetings with me or just, you know, be there as if I ever get out of Dodge City here.
Would that be acceptable?
Sure.
It'd be good to have company.
Would, would anybody be interested in being an alternate? Right? Excellent.
I'll pick you up on the way, it's very early in the morning.
Eight o'clock.
No problem.
So can I just appoint these two or do I now have to? Okay, so you guys are appointed. Thank you. Moving on to seven point four, could I have a motion to ratify the 2014-2017 collective bargaining agreement?
I'll move.
Thank you, Jean.
Second.
Second, thank you, Leah.
I'll move to postpone the motion until after the executive session.
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So moving on to the consent agenda, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and the meeting dates are listed right there and.
The SBA, the SBA maybe?
So I guess I need a motion to go into executive session.
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.